I don't see the minnows.
Mark, what's the master? Ask me if anybody can catch me.
Yeah.
I don't know them.
No, no, no. There you go. Well, thanks.
I'm gonna try.
Thanks.
Technical difficulties, so. No, I know. We do the house for hearing, right? In my.
All right, it's Mark.
I noticed. I was just about to.
There you go.
What is the matter? Wait, wait, wait until they hear it from somebody. Do you want to give a note? Is that what they say? Oh.
Oh, you do. No, it's okay.
What are you going to say?
I'm excited, so we're going now.
Public hearing on council orders 2016 dash 077 and 2016 078 would seek to update the land disposition agreement definition in covenant definition in section 12.023, section 2D of the urban redevelopment planning. Stolen to the open person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium.
It's a very important advice that such recordings or transmissions are being made by the procedure under the President and our team acknowledging this law. At this time, I'd like to call forward, I believe, the administration if there's any presentation on behalf.
Point of work for me.
Please, thank you.
Counsel Kane.
Present.
Counsel Cole.
Present.
Counsel DeBong.
Present.
Counsel Finn.
Present.
Counsel Harris.
Present.
Counsel Hughes.
Here.
Counsel Liam.
Present.
Counsel Comanche.
Present.
Chairman Forrest.
Present. Okay, at this point, I'd like to. Okay, it's technical difficulties in some areas. At this point, we'd like to call forward if anyone wishing to speak in favor and we'll start with council order 2016 dash 077, LDA definition. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and address for the record.
William J. Geary, 15 Millwood Road, Flana, Massachusetts. I'm special counsel to the mayor for downtown development. And I'm here representing the administration of other members of the executive team, including Mr. Fadzis, director of planning, Mr. Hines, assistant city solicitor, Mr. Rob Stevens, the downtown planning director, director for downtown planning. On the council order related to the land disposition amendment, the administration respectfully urges a yay vote as this amendment is. With the current regimen required for the disposition of public property. I'd also like to advise the council and thank the council for their support. On URDP amendment number three, which was the last time I had the pleasure of appearing for the council. And which the council did approve. We did receive notification, all of these amendments require approval by the state agency, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and we did receive notification that the DHCD did approve amendment number three. And we have provided to the clerk copies of that approval. As I understand, you're going to take these orders serially, that could lose my confidence.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed in favor?
This is to the first amendment is the 2016 077, this is the land disposition agreement update. To speak, they are going to go through the public hearing, we're going to close the first one and get into the covenant. So on the first amendment of the LDA.
I think I'm in the right spot. I'm not sure, I don't have the, I don't have the agenda. So I apologize, my name is Barry Keating. Sound like I brought a lightsaber here. I'm a business agent for plumbers union. I was asked to come here by some Quincy residents who live in the town, some are here tonight, some of them are on their way. Anyway, I think I'm on the right agenda here with the Quincy city councilor, Quincy city council looking to have a say in these covenants.
That's the second.
Second, I apologize.
Okay.
I'll be back.
Anybody else on the first, on the first matter is the, any land disposition agreement, this is the language change, must be approved by the director of department of planning, community development, the mayor and the city council. So this is relative to the LDA process, not the covenant. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? And we also have forums, where the forums, in the back of the room, if anyone would like to sign in in favor? Anybody wishing to speak opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed or undecided, you're also welcome to sign in, opposed or undecided, in the back of the room. With that, I'll call that portion of the public hearing closed. At this point, we're going to go to council order 2016 dash 078. This one is the updating URDP, section 12.02, section 2D covenant definition update, just to be clear. This is looking for the language change, any urban redevelopment covenant must be approved by the director of the department of planning, community development, the mayor and the city council. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please go forward. Mr. Kane.
Great.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Barry Keating. 1240 Mass Ave, business agent for plumbers union. Like I said, a lot of Quincy residents asked me to come here tonight. We have over, almost 300 members in the world who live in Quincy. And they asked me to come, they're very concerned about this. One of the things they're concerned about is the council giving up their power. This is, and I come to a lot of these councils, as you can imagine, with my job, you know, this is one of the, I think, one of the best and thought out councils they have. You know, everyone's well informed and I don't see why, the members who live in Quincy, don't see why the council would give up this authority. You know, another set of eyes never hurts. You know, I've heard people say it can undermine the development in Quincy. The city of Boston has the Boston redevelopment authority and, you know, steeplechases don't have as much jumps and hoops as you're going to go through as the Boston redevelopment authority. One more set of eyes on this process certainly wouldn't hurt and I think it would help quite a bit. You know, I read the news a lot and I, you know, I know there's a former developer in Quincy who's had a little bit of problems recently. You know, for the council to give up the transparency that would be brought out by multiple people, have an oversight on this, and there's one person or one group having a deal on the side. It seems outrageous to me that the council will give up this authority or not look for this authority. It's, it's an important thing to protect the residents of Quincy, this, this city, it's a big city, there's a lot of councils, everyone represents different interests and I don't see any reason why the people directly vote for the council. Especially in their districts, would want to give up this authority and let, let's see it go. The council, in our members' opinion, should, should keep this, we, they're in desperate need of the transparency that this amendment will bring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman LaFouras, honorable counsel. My name is Brian Russo. I'm the president and business agent for the roofers union of New England. And I represent contractors and members here in Quincy and I also agree with my colleague who just spoke that I think that in the interest of transparency and fairness and deliberation for all members and voters in the city of Quincy, there should be a broader oversight and overview of projects that are going to be proposed and done in the city. And I am in agreement with this proposal. And I think that it makes good public policy when you can deliberate more thoroughly on any project that's going to be built in, in a city or a town. So I would suggest that it's good policy and it should move forward.
Thank you. If you're going to speak, if you step right forward to proceeding, procedure also, anybody else speaking? We also have a committee meeting before the council starts, if you're going to speak, please stand up next in line, thank you.
My name is Michael Smith, I'm a Quincy resident, long time. I'm from the walls in section Quincy and I rise in favor of this amendment. You know, I, I've talked to different people about what, what the plan A form of government in Quincy is, if it's strong mayor, weaker city council, mayor gets to make the decisions and I've also heard that this would actually streamline the process and get things done quicker, but that actually isn't what has happened with Quincy Center. The construction of Quincy Center is definitely gone slowly. You know, there's been a lot of bumps in the road, I think more eyes given, more voices would definitely help the process along and, you know, I, again, I rise in favor.
Hi, my name is Clay Coffin and I'm a resident of Quincy for about 20 years.
We can leave your address for reference, please.
29 Charles Mount Avenue. And I just want to reiterate what I, what B A said, you know, that we are looking for transparency and, you know, for more people that are involved in decision making, it's better for us and for the Quincy city council to be more involved in the decisions.
Thank you.
My name is James Kudic, 338 Grand Street. Robert Mucci is my chief councilman, couldn't ask for a better representation.
I didn't pay him to say that. I will now, but I didn't afford it.
Can't say it enough, but transparency needs to always, I mean, shouldn't give up any power at all, it has to be the checks and balances and, I mean, the whole city, like I said, has gone slow enough and we couldn't be in more agreement with this at all, so, thank you.
How you doing, John Rodafell, 62 Grand Mall Road? Basically, this will prove whether you guys are independent or if you guys are rubber stamps. So this is to make sure that you guys vote and stay independent, so I'm glad this is going up. I can't believe that people from the city aren't for the city council reviewing something and the mayor reviewing something. For people who are watching this, this is about letting the mayor have all the control or having the mayor review a project and then having the city council review the project. So I hope all you guys vote for independence tonight, you do not vote to be a rubber stamp, thank you very much.
Sorry about my voice. My name is Matthew Lyons, I'm a resident of 64 Willard Street, Quincy, Mass. My voice is sore because everyone, on the 13th day of a strike with Verizon, we're fighting corporate greed at its finest. It's a company that makes 1.8 billion dollars a month and really want to move all their jobs overseas. I rise as a member of IBW 2022 and I'm in favor of this proposal. I don't know how anybody can be against transparency when it comes to spending taxpayers' dollars. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Quincy. A little history since we have some new counselors in front of you, maybe you might be watching this. The city's currently working under the so-called second amendment to the urban redevelopment plan. That was always intended to be more of a working draft and final plan. A third draft, of the third revision of it was affected via the land disposal agreement with streetworks. Rather than doing a separate URDP third amendment and land disposal only agreement with streetworks, it was decided to do it as an omnibus agreement. Unfortunately, from the agreement, the streetworks collapsed, so did all the things that were in the document that would address the things that should be done or should have been done for a third amendment. Key element of that omnibus agreement was the council did review what streetworks probably had to do as a master developer. What was going to be built, where, in very, fairly specific terms, size, height, commercial, residential, parking, whatever, was put in place, considerable financial terms. They did it on the front end with their review and blessed it to allow it to move forward quickly and efficiently. Since that agreement collapsed, the mayor's been working under the second agreement, which does not offer any review. And a number of private projects have already been approved in ways that could readily be questioned. If the council doesn't have control over things going forward, we have no transparency. We will have, we will surely have new projects happen where people will find things questionable as to how they were done. The council is not in the way of this redevelopment happening, but they should be in the loop. Therefore, I look forward to sufficient number of you voting in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Please stand right in line behind each other, we'll write through this.
Good evening, John Keys, 100 Goldway, 10210. All the same reasons that gentleman expressed the amnesty in fact that the center has been in turmoil since streetworks have broken. Just like you can think of that when you call to see, thank you.
Yes, Tommy Brady, 22 dollar broke, Quincy resident also, I am also in favor of you folks keeping your power and don't give it up, please.
Counsel Pometo, 116 Saffron Street, home owner, business operator in Quincy. I'd like to, I don't think I could say any more than what's been said, I think you guys still have to keep your power and keep this as a unified thing where not one person is doing all the work saying yes or no. You guys need to come together just like I do, you members. We stay as one and we're strong. You know, we've been, watch my French there, we've been screwed up while working with local seven, ironworkers, so. Some, as all know, have you, non-union guys coming in here, undertrained, under skilled, underqualified. That's going to say a lot about the building, like the one we sit in.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Also, we have sign chiefs in the back, if you'd like to sign in favor. At this time, anyone opposed or undecided? And I can go to start with a person in your administration.
Thank you very much, Captain Chairwell. The administration respectfully urges the members of the council to vote nay on this matter. And it may be fortuitous that both of these items are on the agenda. Because while we recommended a yay vote on the LDA amendment because it's consistent with appropriate practice and the law pertaining to disposition of public land, this is entirely distinguishable, entirely different. And that's what is the crucial factor here. This relates to private property. This relates to the ability of the city of Quincy underwriting it with language approved by the predecessor councils of this order. And it may be also fortunate that in many ways, I'm a newcomer to the council, even though I spent the last four years as chair of the planning board. I reviewed, along with the members of the planning board, the issues concerning certificates of authenticity to ensure that the private projects which were proposed were in consonance with the plan that was so laboriously put together by this council and the administration over the course of the last number of years. And it's critical for this council to understand that we haven't reached the promised land yet. We're struggling to get to the promised land and right now, we're working on four potential projects. But it's significant to also note that the only projects that are under construction are the projects that were, are on private property. And took private developers, private investors courage to invest in an uncertain proposition. And notwithstanding what I read in the newspaper over the weekend, these weren't backroom deals, these are frontroom deals. These are deals that we expect our mayor to make because they're a binding contract. They attract investors. To add to the number of steps that an investor and a developer has to go through is not going to inspire new developers to come. It is going to chill that process. The whole purpose of the URDP was to facilitate development, not to impede. And to add another step to that process adds time cost. And that's what we've been struggling with. Four months ago, when the mayor asked me to take on this role, I started working immediately with prospective developers. Developers who have put skin in the earth. Someone mentioned all the hoops you have to go through in Boston, but we have an organization called LBC Boston that we've been negotiating with. They've chosen to stop developing in Boston because of all the impediments that they had to go through. And we have now spent scores upon scores of hours negotiating with them to put together a LDA, in the case of LBC Boston, because we will be conveying a small portion of the Hancock block to facilitate that development. And one of the things that I've been impressed with, certainly in the four months that I've been working within the administration, is the quality of the staff, the quality of the mayoral team. And having had the opportunity to work with many of you when I was chairman of planning board, I have had universally positive experiences. And I think it's unfortunate that our collective efforts somehow get construed or misrepresented as backroom deals. These are binding contracts, they're legitimate business contracts that are widely used around the United States to inspire development that would not otherwise naturally come to us. So for those reasons, and incidentally, these people don't get tax breaks. When Western Chestnut opens up, they're going to be paying taxes. When Five Loop Place opens up, they're going to be paying taxes and each of them contributed significant sums for infrastructure development that is going to facilitate further development and has also helped the city revitalize infrastructure that, as we all know, is over 100 years old. That's what is at stake here and that's the distinction between these two issues. We don't want to get them confused. And for my former, I'm former Teamster in movement. So as I speak to my former girlfriend, I say to you, the projects, we don't want to impede projects that are going to bring jobs to the workforce of the city. And if you look around the infrastructure projects, many of them are public projects, which the administration was able to secure funding for, for, through various government sources, many of them are subject to the prevailing wage law. Also, we are aware of the fact that Western Chestnut, that Quincy Mutual Insurance did enter into an agreement with those unions that were interested in working on that project. And I understand, and I know there's a representative from Quincy Mutual, so I'll let him address that. But that's what's at stake here, is turning this situation that is on the brink, we, as I said, we're not there yet. We really need to get these additional two projects underway and the investors who took the leap of faith by investing their private funds and who are going to be paying taxes as soon as their buildings are occupied, that they don't see a further reason not to continue to invest in Quincy. And prospective developers who don't invest in Quincy now won't be deterred from investing in Quincy.
Marilyn Manning, resident of the city of Quincy, and for all of the reasons the gentleman preceding me put us quite eloquently, if you need to get moving, but more personally than that.
Point of work, please, address.
Your address, the right of address.
Your address, more personally than that. I have been part of downtown development for nearly a quarter of a century, almost as long as some of you have been alive. This is the first time under three administrations, several councils, several council meetings, that I see a light at the end of a tunnel. And I just don't want anything to keep it from happening because I would like to see it at least in my lifetime and I don't have enough for 25 years.
Good choice.
Narrow to the right of your address. Your address to the right.
Oh, sorry. 230 Willard Street.
We appreciate all of your services in the city of New Orleans. What else does this wish to speak in favor?
Good evening, councilors, I'm Paul Heinz, at 38 Tamar Road. I'm a 50-year resident of the city of Quincy and as stated earlier, I do work in the law department of the city, as you all know. I've been asked to come up and help everyone to understand what the normal renewal covenant is. But I think the easiest way to start is to tell you what it's not. This is not an agreement that allows developers to bypass the public hearing process that's associated with zoning variances, special permits and reviews. That is just misinformation and that's what people are basing their understanding of this conversation on. The covenant is a contract, plain and simple. Contract, unless it's an appropriation of city monies, is a purely and entirely an executive function under the constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Here, people talk about transparency and don't give up your power. Respectfully, I suggest you. Respectfully, I suggest to you, you don't currently have that power. And our constitution provides that. John Adams knew what he was doing when he wrote it that way. So, it helps the expenditure of city money for appropriation, and it is purely an executive function. And the representation of this, a lack of transparency, just, you know, brings silence with me. Because the covenant is something that starts the process. And when you get the covenant, which is where the private developer, private developer commits to paying city expenses to build city infrastructure and contribute to city parking infrastructures, they're dedicating their private money for city needs. And that allows them to enter into the COC process, which is a certificate of consistency. And that certificate of consistency process is the zoning process. It is a completely vetted, public process with public hearings and vote by the planning board. There's time for public input, there's public hearings, and the councilors in the past have spoken at them. The covenant is detailed in the current URDP, the Urban Revitalization and Development Plan, as the contract that provides for the parking and the infrastructure, nothing more. The fear is that the process will become politicized. And quite frankly, someone's seen it tonight. This isn't about union work. This isn't about the work in hand. We want everybody to work. Everybody has the ability to come in and be on the work on these private projects. My understanding is with the West of Chestnut project, every union that sat at the table and rolled up his sleeves with West of Chestnut got the work. They were not excluded. There's another step to this process as well. The entirety of the URDP and any amendments to it are spelled out by Massachusetts state law. It's chapter 121B. The process is supposed to start in the planning agency, in our case, the planning department. Notwithstanding that, it then has to go for public hearing with them and to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Those have both been done. And the reports, my understanding, have been sent to you. The next step is to send the proposed plan or amendments to the quote municipal officials under the statute. And that term municipal official is defined as the city council and the mayor. But that's not even the last step. Because once a amendment or a plan is adopted and is approved by the mayor, then it has to go to the foundation housing and community development for approval. So, there's still another hurdle. This is all set forth in statute. And we have to be cautious of that, and we have to follow it. Heard a tale of people saying how, you know, we gave away the store, you know, we didn't protect the city's interests. Quite frankly, that's insulting. That's all that worked in these projects, because that's just not true. All the URDP covenants and every other document associated with the downtown are public documents. People have to read them, people have the right to review them. People have been quoting them tonight. And that, those documents are available prior to the planning board process on the adoption of any COC proceeding. And the reason the COC process was brought in, whether it be for land disposition agreement for city land or it be an urban renewal covenant of private land, is again to facilitate and to streamline development. The URDP, as adopted by the city, makes findings of the decadent condition of our downtown. And it cites the reasons therefore. It cites undersized parcel of land, diversity of ownership of the undersized parcel of land, irregular shapes of the parcel of land, poor circulation pedestrians, poor circulation for traffic, not enough open space. The city has made these policy savings, they've made these findings. And the way that it's addressed to allow for urban redevelopment is what the council and the city has set forth in this process. We go now into change that. Again, you can politicize it and delay it and have the chilling effect on the private dollars coming in to develop. I would urge you not to do that. Again, we spoke to, people talk about giving up the power and the checks and balances, it's been tossed around the term at previous. But again, this is point blank checks and balances. This is an executive function. It needs to remain that way to help us facilitate the downtown development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak in favor?
Good evening, Mayor Chair, members of the committee, council. My name is Jim Moran. I'm Executive Vice President, Secretary, General Counsel of Quincy Mutual. We respectfully urge that the council order 2016-78 be rejected following the planning board's negative recommendation. The proposed order would amend the definition of the urban redevelopment covenant in the URDP so as to require city council approval. We believe that the proposed amendment would materially increase the political and economic risk of investing into Quincy Center. Doing so runs the very real risk of stifling further investment by other private landlords in the urban renewal district. That would be very unfortunate, not so much for Quincy Mutual, but for the city and for the residents of the city. We believe we are at a cusp of a rebirth of vibrant Quincy Center. Passage of council order 2016-78 is likely to turn back the clock many years and perhaps even squelch the rebirth of the center. The existing COC language in the URDP creates a framework that encourages investment and development, something that does not exist under traditional zoning bylaws. Frankly, it depoliticizes permitting process in the city. Adding a new layer of approval requirements is antithetical to everything that so many people for so many years, including this council, have worked for, which is to create, to bring to fruition the development potential of the center that has simply not existed for the last four decades. From experience, I can assure you that it's still incredibly difficult to bring quality redevelopment online into downtown. It's all about the economics. Quincy Center has incredible potential, good bonus, as they say. Of the economics of developing private property in Quincy Center remains very tenuous. Frankly, it's simply difficult to get the numbers to work. Because it's a matter of practical, as a practical matter of the year, the available rates, rent levels matched against the risks and expenses of permitting and developing urban property produce anemic returns at best. Quincy Mutual has a unique investment perspective on this issue. And our motivation respecting our hometown community and the residents of the city, that quite frankly, very few other investors would bring to the table. Capital investors need predictability, certainty, and the opportunity to make a reasonable risk-adjusted return. Without that, a capitalistic investor is simply not going to invest. Eyes open, Quincy Mutual invested millions of dollars into the Gran trust building and WOC project that we knew would never be renewed. But it is very doubtful that we would have done so if the COC process wasn't available under the URDP as a streamlined and depoliticized alternative to traditional zoning. The URC is not a permit. It's only an agreement between the city executive reflecting which permitting process a developer has chosen to follow. Either first, the urban redevelopment certificate of consistency process laid out via the planning board in the URDP, or alternatively, by right zoning and traditional site plan and review hearings. Both processes require full public process, including public hearings. But only the COC process requires the urban redevelopment covenant. And only the COC allows for the private funding or requires the private funding of substantial public infrastructure improvements and shared parking mandated by the URC process. The certificate of consistency process was developed and approved by this council specifically to create a streamlined permitting process governed by the planning board and directed by the government goals outlined in the URDP plans. If a developer chooses traditional zoning, that developer is not bound by anything in the URDP and is not bound by anything other than the city's zoning code. It's been said that if this particular disorder were passed, you may as well put the URDP on the shelf. No one is going to use it. That's the unfortunate fact as we see it. Developer of private property, I'm talking about private property now, not subject to a land disposition agreement with the city, who chooses to proceed the traditional by right zoning has no obligation to participate in the public infrastructure or parking programs. In the case of Quincy Mutual, the URC dated February 25, 2015, that we executed for the city with respect to West of Chestnut and the pending East of Chestnut documents that Quincy Mutual expended more than $1,183,000 for public infrastructure improvements in the URDP project area. Specifically, Quincy Mutual paid over $314,000 for sanitary sewer improvements, over $424,000 for water and drainage improvements, and another $445,000 for the town board relocation enhancement work. These expenditures benefited the city as a whole. And as a result, the taxpayers of the city did not have to pay for these critical and much needed public infrastructure requirements. In addition, the URC between Quincy Mutual and the city addresses how West of Chestnut satisfies the public carers and place-making requirements of the city zoning ordinances and the Quincy Center district design patterns, and how the shared parking requirements of the URDP are satisfied with respect to WOC. West of Chestnut, the potential future East of Chestnut redevelopment project involves private property not subject to a land disposition agreement. Because the city council sought that several years ago to establish the streamlined COC process. And because Quincy Mutual elected to follow that process in an effort to jumpstart the redevelopment of private property in Quincy Center district, WOC happily is about ready to come online, bringing new residents, new taxpayers into the downtown. And significant public infrastructure and parking improvements that benefit the city are simultaneously being delivered that otherwise simply would not have happened under traditional zoning. The real-world effect of changing the URC and the COC process to require council order will, as a practical matter, relegate developers' private property to simply rely upon traditional zoning. Adding a new layer, an additional layer of regulatory authority will only achieve the exact opposite of the stated purposes of the URDP. That was created to help alleviate the stagnation of economic development in the city center that was at least in part due to the structure of the city zoning code. Traditional zoning in the city only makes it harder for investors. It makes it harder to for the city to realize its ultimate urban redevelopment goal, which is the delivery of shared parking provisions and the potential for public improvements on a project-by-project basis. For the foregoing reasons, respectfully urge that council order 2016-78 not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Cady, I just wanted to, a previous speaker got up and said, you know, any labor union that wanted to work, they're trying to work on West Chestnut. This is...
This is not...
Well, I think it's a, you know, point of privilege. Certainly got up and said that any labor union that wanted to...
I'm sorry that that's not...
I'm sorry you made a misconception, we allow them to make a plea. I just, I just need like a minute.
Speak, speak.
I can say to the body...
So, I sat in a meeting right at Quincy Mutual. And I'll tell you, the plumbers' union worked hard to try and get on that job. And I'll tell you candidly, and I don't think it's a reflection on Quincy Mutual. The developer and the contractor told us, you know, why do we need to give those guys health insurance and pension plans? We have contractors that work on that. We have, our plumbing contractors work on almost exclusively all of the Alvin projects, where they're mostly non-union but us. Braintree, the same contractor that tried to bid over there with Delaware, you know, couldn't even get complete drawn. So, to say a union didn't want to work on that job, you know, I find wholly offensive. And I appreciate the council's indulgence. Thank you.
We do have signatures back in the room, we would like to sign in and support our votes. With that, I would call this party to public hearing closed, government committee. So, good evening. I'd like to call to the ordinance committee for our hearing, the council orders 2016-077. We'll take this matter first is section, updating URDP, section 12.023, section 2D, land disposition agreement definition update. The amendment would be now therefore be resolved with the definition of land disposition agreement and the court amendment...
Leave the reading.
Given, again, Mr. Gary's testimony related to this in the public testimony, because I think given our own sense of this, that I would move that the committee offer a positive recommendation in passage of 2016-077.
Thank you. Second by council, motion on the motion.
If I could, just on the motion. I would just simply, am I good? I would simply just suggest that, you know, Mr. Gary spoke in favor of this. The planning board approved this 5-0. I would just ask this body to reject the recommendation of the CAC, the Citizens Committee, the Citizens Advisory Committee. I mean, they had said that in their, their letter dated April 22 of this year to us. The CAC believes in a streamlined regulatory process articulated in the Quincy Center URDP as amended. Adoption of council orders 2016-75, 77, and 78 will reverse the progress made in the downtown over the last years, over the last nine years and send a wrong signal to the development community. I haven't heard anyone in the development community say that this particular, which is included in that rejection relative to the LDA, the administration's on board, the council's on board, the planning board's on board. I would just ask that this body, prior to our vote, we not support their finding. It's not going to move progress backwards. No one has said that. Everyone's on board with this except for the Citizens Advisory Committee here. I would ask that we not hold that opinion in high regard as we, as we vote on this. Thank you.
With that, please call the board. Council Kane. So, with council 077.
Oh, okay.
Positive recommendation on motion. Council Cole.
Yes.
Council DeMong.
Yes.
Council Ken.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Drew.
Yes.
Council Yan.
Yes.
Council Palmer.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next matters are more partial to council order 2016-078. And this is an update to URDP, section 12.02, section 2D.
Braintree.
And this is relative to redevelopment covenant. With that, council Palmer.
I move a positive passage, a positive recommendation by the ordinance committee to the full committee. It doesn't require a second vote, but take a second if I could on the motion.
Our motion, council Palmer.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who gave testimony tonight, both in favor and against. Just happy that folks are participating. Normally, I mean, we're almost an hour in. Normally, we have a public hearing before the council. And it's, you know, it's crickets. Nobody comes, nobody weighs in. So, at the very least, we have a conversation that we started here, and we have people paying attention and thinking about how we want to shape our downtown so that, at the very least, serve the purpose to get people involved. And I also particularly want to thank Mr. Moran for coming up tonight. His voice is one that I value in this process quite a bit. I do, I have some issue with some of the testimony you said. We're just on a different, we see things slightly different in a way. But I just, when you spoke about Quincy Mutual putting in the $1.1 million worth of infrastructure improvement, that wasn't exactly Quincy Mutual. That was Hancock Associates, of which Quincy Mutual was a partner. It was a separate corporation. And that was the same corporation that we entered into the LDA with, with Streetworks. That was the company that Streetworks operated under. And I understand those were guys with a vision and you were the guy with the checkbook. And so, we appreciate that because we wouldn't even be here if it wasn't for the contribution that Quincy Mutual stepped up and made at the very beginning. So, thank you for that. I will say though, again, you got credit in the covenant for $1.1 million worth of infrastructure that another company made. And that's fine. I'm not saying that that's, you know, that's the worst thing in the world because it was your money at the end of the day. But when it came time for other pieces of contracts and agreements to come into place, namely the one that said you're going to use local, local organized labor, it was, well, we're a different company, we're not bound by that same agreement. So, that Hancock's associate was no longer worth the paper it was printed on because that was it. At that point, Quincy Mutual said, oh, it's a different company. That's a different entity. But with the $1.1 million, you say, no, no, we were part of that entity. We're okay with that. So, that's an... So that's an issue that, you know, maybe you and I can debate later on, but nevertheless, I thank you for coming up, I thank you for your support of Quincy Center, because it wouldn't have, nothing would be happening if you guys didn't step up out of the gate with Streetworks and get this ball rolling. So thank you for that, and, you know, Quincy Mutual will always be aces in my book in that regard. I support this measure, I encourage my colleagues to support this measure. And I support it because I believe it's the best way to support the taxpayers of the city. It's the best way to ensure that the deals for downtown put the taxpayers of Quincy above the developers. Now, I'm not saying we should stick it to the developers, you know, they should be able to make money, but there's got to be an equilibrium here. The mayor's presence, premise, his vision for downtown was always to put developers' money before taxpayers. It was always to put their money at risk before the taxpayer money was put at risk. That's what the LDA was putting forward, that's what his whole vision for downtown was. I want to make, I want to ensure that we maintain that approach. I supported it six, seven years ago when it was pitched, and I support it now. And it worked with the LDA. The taxpayers didn't lose out in the LDA. The falling apart of the deal with Streetworks, the taxpayers did not lose out because of that premise that the mayor put forward, because the Quincy model, that the developers would bear the risk on the front end, not the taxpayers. And the whole reason why this is an issue before us now, I'd suggest, is because there's been three development projects approved for downtown. That's so far, three approved so far, more in the pipeline, but three approved. In each, there was a covenant or the agreement between the developers and the city, signed by the mayor. And someone gave us a copy of this tonight, the definition of the Urban Redevelopment Covenant in the Second Amendment of the URDP, which is what we're operating those. The definition in there says, "The contract by, in between the city of Quincy and a developer, pursuant to which the developer participates, participates in the costs for infrastructure and parking facilities serving the project area." That's our policy, that's the policy that this body has voted on in iterations past. The agreements reached thus far in those three projects have dictated how much the developers would invest into that art, public spaces, and how they would contribute to the shared parking to be created, as described in this URDP, what covenant is. Now, the URDP says 1% of hard construction costs will be paid into the Art and Public Spaces Fund for the betterment of the downtown area. And it also says that developers will share the cost of parking with the taxpayers. Remember, there's a price tag for this stuff, this isn't some esoteric discussion. We have a price tag for that. The infrastructure and parking downtown will cost approximately $60 million. We know that. The taxpayer, right now, and the plan as we're moving forward, the taxpayer will be on the hook for all of that unless the URDP is followed, unless this language right here, in which the developer participates in the costs for infrastructure in parking facilities serving the parking area. That's what the covenant is supposed to be. They pay into this parking fund, that's our current policy for downtown. The three projects that have been permitted do not pay into that parking fund, and they have not made any real contribution to the long-term art or public spaces downtown. East of Chestnut and West of Chestnut, hundreds of apartments, retail stores, restaurants, their contribution to parking is a spot for a zip car. One zip car, it's not even like, it's like a free zip car, like anyone, if you can get it, the thing's free, it's just, you know, a zip car. All the parking for their restaurants and retail uses, all that parking will have to be paid for by the taxpayers across this city. And again, maybe if we look at, in an isolated situation, just that project, and we say, okay, listen, if it wasn't for them stepping up, we wouldn't have the downtown moving forward at all, that's fine. I would be on board with that. If that was the argument that was made, I would have no problem with that. But that was never the plan for every project to come down the line, to burden the residential taxpayers with the costs of downtown development. And that's what this is about. It's about making sure that the developers pay their fair share into things like parking, so that the residents, the taxpayers, don't bear the entirety of those costs. The Patriot Ledger ran a story last week about how the first part of that $60 million worth of work that I was talking about, the infrastructure work, the parking work, was put out for bid for the downtown, including paving, new sidewalks for West of Chestnut. All I could think about was the 70-year-old woman from South Quincy who calls me every single spring, every string, every spring, about the condition of her street. She lives in the same house now that she was born and raised in. All I could think about was if she saw that article in the ledger about the investment into the areas near West of Chestnut, what would I say to her when she calls me this spring? Her street hasn't been paved in 40, 50 years, it has potholes left and right, like so many of our streets. She pays taxes on her home, taxes she can barely afford, it's more and more difficult every year for her to stay in that house by herself. And she stays because she loves this city, she was here when the downtown was in its heyday. And she wants that again, she wants that vibrant downtown, not because she'll be out bar hopping at all the new places that Quincy Mutual is going to invite in, but she knows, or going to the fancy restaurants they're going to have. But she knows that it's important for the city economically, for the city to grow, we have to have this development. And that's good for everyone. But when things like this come up, I think about her and what I can say to her, when we're using her tax dollars to improve the infrastructure downtown, but not in her neighborhood. She's paid her fair share. And all I'm suggesting with this proposal is that we ask the developers to contribute their fair share for that same parking garage. This is about a balancing act, making sure that we're encouraging development downtown while not overburdening the taxpayers with that cost. And right now, I suggest things are out of balance. The three developments have not contributed to that shared parking. Only the taxpayers, the residents, so far, will be paying anything towards that infrastructure work for these developments. Developments, by the way, and congratulations to Quincy Mutual, that are charging $2,900 for a two-bedroom apartment, I mean, good for them, great, I have no problem with people making money, especially people when they're investing money and they're, and they're putting out a good product, that they're reaping financial rewards. But let's not kid ourselves into thinking that these luxury apartments are being built for Quincy residents. That little old lady isn't going to sell her house and downsize into a $2,800 two-bedroom luxury apartment in Quincy Square for $2,900 a month. And great, again, good, I'm glad you're getting it, but these are, these are being built to bring people in who aren't currently in the city. By and large, they're being built to market us, against cities like Cambridge, Somerville, you know, Charles Town, and say, we're right on the red line, come live here, you know, work in Boston, do your thing. And that's great, that's how a city grows, we bring new people in. But, the problem is, not a, I mean, not a lot of college, recent college graduates from Quincy are going to, are going to be coming back to Quincy and make their first apartment back in their old hometown, a $2,900 two-bedroom apartment in downtown Quincy.
Excuse me, Council, we have one pass our second committee start time, so I think what we want to do is recess this, keep this in committee. I'd like you to wrap up, you went into wrap up, I know you, you court, but I really don't think that with our agenda this evening, to recess and back and reel, but I think we don't have the time on tonight's agenda. So this is a matter, I know there's a lot of discussion that we want to get into, and I definitely don't have the time, but I want to have you wrap up your comments and do a recess.
Well, wait, I don't want, I don't think it's fair for me to finish the things that I have to say and not allow other people to speak, so I'll stop right now, we can wait.
So, so is the... Not a present, but...
Okay, thank you very much. So is the plan to come back on a separate night to discuss this, or...
I don't know, my only plan was to stop talking.
No, I think, is that, is that...
You should take that as a win.
I think that that seems to be, I think everybody has a lot to say, we have certainly heard a lot of testimony this evening. I know we have a lot to get to, in particular important folks who are, who are here not to minimize the discussion after this, but I do think it's something that more is another meeting time, if that's okay with the sponsors of... Yes.
Mr. Speaker, how's it going?
I'm particularly willing to do that, because unfortunately this evening, Councilor Shea, representing the city council, would not be here this evening, so I have no problem picking this up, as long as we continue to execute that, I think, because it's great.
So I will seek in our schedule in the convenience this evening for a day to continue this hearing, and that will generally...
At least, I...
It will remain, it will remain, it will never be... Thank you, thank you.